The September 21st Louisville City Council meeting and I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, our meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. If you'd like to request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee can raise their hand by clicking the raised hand, which you'll find at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in will enter star nine on your telephone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge you and the city clerk unmutes you, please tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll just need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. City Clerk Muse, could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. I move we approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everyone. The agenda is approved. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda and items that appear on our consent agenda. Any members of the public care to comment this evening for items that are not on our agenda or items that appear on our consent agenda? Seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Say it.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Move to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Dickinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on our agenda. Just wanted to let everyone know I was able to get my flu shot yesterday for this season, so flu shots are now available and ready to go. And it's supposed to be a tough flu season. Anything we can do to do our part to keep hospitalization down is a good thing, so. Check it out. There's lots of pharmacies downtown offering them and it wasn't, it wasn't bad at all. Any other council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, it's our city manager's report. City Manager Davis?
Evening, Mayor and City Council. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Our first item of regular business done this evening is Resolution Number 66 Series 2021, a resolution approving a business assistance agreement with Pizza On Purpose, Incorporated, for an economic development project in the city of Louisville. We'll have a staff presentation this evening from our Economic Vitality Director, Megan Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll actually be turning it over to Austin Brown, who is our new Economic Vitality Specialist for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Austin, take it away when you're ready. We can see your presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers. Austin Brown for Economic Vitality. The request before you this evening is a business assistance package for Pizza On Purpose, doing business as Double D's Sour Dough Pizzeria and Tap House. Double D's is considering expansion into Louisville and is interested in leasing space at 577 East South Boulder Road. The pizzeria was originally founded in Louisville in 2006, but moved to a larger space in Broomfield in order to offer dine-in seating. Today, the company has one location in Broomfield. The project would occupy 1,200 square feet. The Double D's would refinish for its pizzeria and tap house concept. This location was most recently occupied by Pizza King from 2010 to 2019 and has not had a sales tax generating use in this space since the third quarter of 2019. The applicant anticipates minor improvements to the building, which would allow them to open by the end of 2021. The company would employ approximately 18 employees with job salaries around $25 per hour, including tips. Staff finds that the project does meet business assistance package criteria as it creates new jobs, draws new customers, and generates new sales tax while utilizing an existing building. The proposed assistance includes a 50% rebate on new sales tax over a five-year period, which should be capped at $60,000. The termination clause includes an April 30th, 2022 completion date, and the business must remain in Louisville for seven years, where a percentage of rebates received must be repaid. The estimated financial impact includes $115,500 in sales taxes paid to the city, half of which would be rebated. The total impact over five years is estimated to be $57,750. Staff requests that council adopts the resolution approving a business assistance package with Pizza On Purpose Incorporated. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the great presentation. That takes us to public comment on this agenda item. Any members of the public care to comment this evening on this topic? If you do, go ahead and click that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine. All right, seeing none, that takes us back over for council questions, comments, or motions, councilmembers. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this, this application. It's nice to see a business that started in Louisville returning to Louisville. And so I'm happy to move for approval of Resolution Number 66 Series 2021.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll just say that I'm very excited to see what you do with the place. Looking forward to having pizza here in town again. With no other discussion, I'll take it to the city clerk and ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann? Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And just the city charter does list that I get to be a member of council, so that is correct. I'll take that as a compliment. To our next item on our agenda, which is ordinance number 1811 Series 2021, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan, Red Veil Ridge Master Plan. This is our second reading and public hearing, which has been continued from 7/18/2021, 7/27/2021, 8/3/2021, 8/17/2021, and 8/31/2021. I'll just remind everyone where we are in the process. We've closed the public hearing and we are on council discussion and deliberation. The staff brought back our comments from last time in the form of an ordinance so that we weren't crafting the language from the dais, and so I will turn it to councilmembers if there's any discussion of the language that was crafted. Any more deliberation or motions, councilmembers? Councilmember Dickinson?
Mayor, I don't know if there's, if you have any desire for structure, if you want to go through the points or just anything, but one, one, one thing that stood out for me was I felt like we had some confusion as a group as to I'm trying to find bullet point here. It's the number 12, the Net Zero Facility. So do we feel like this has been sort of sorted out in that it's in the PUD process of the application? I'll, I'll just, I'll state that I'm in support of the Net Zero Concept, but I know you made some comments on how difficult that would be. How do you feel about number 12? Do you feel like this is speaking your language or is getting the intent that we're trying to get here? Or do you still feel like it's problematic?
You're asking me?
I was asking you specifically because I thought you made some good points three weeks ago about it, and so just, just, it's in here in this form, so just curious on your opinion of its language in 12 today.
Um, so I wasn't in the majority that inserted this one in, and so I, I don't know how relevant my comments are, but I'm happy to tell you my opinion. I just, I, I think we may, even later tonight, be passing first reading of some building code amendments that make this even further confusing in my opinion on why we would be giving the density bonus for something that we may require of everyone, so it's, it's not totally clear to me, and it's not totally clear that we've defined the terms that are in the item, but I do think it's what we asked for as a body. Councilmember Dickinson, did you want to say anything else?
Um, no, that's okay. I, I appreciate it. I was, I think maybe my memory of the meeting was that we hadn't quite gotten to the point of, of direction on, on that. So I thought, I thought there was a little more confusion, so I, I think, I think most of the other points, there, there was, if, if not contentious, at least some agreement on different things, but, but number 12 caught me as, my, my memory was just that I wasn't sure we had gotten agreement on that, only because, again, I liked the intention but didn't know if the execution would work, so. My, my understanding from your comments is that this doesn't clean it up for you. This is not, this specific language today, it doesn't make it better or more clear for you. That's, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes, Mayor. Well, to bring a little structure to this, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number 1811 Series 2021 with the conditions, 13 conditions as presented by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to the motion, Councilmember Lipton?
No, but I, I'm interested in other people's comments.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney?
I'm just going to ask a point order, Mayor. Can we ask staff a question about what they've developed here?
Let's ask the city attorney that, just to be sure, for the record on the process. We don't want to enter new evidence since the public hearing's closed.
That's why, that's why I asked that question, so thank you.
Let's just ask the city attorney to clarify that for us. City Attorney Kelly?
Yes, Mayor. That's exactly right. No new evidence may be received by the council this evening. If new evidence is desired, you could certainly give public notice of a new public hearing date and reopen the public hearing. And I guess, you know, without really understanding the nature of the questions, I can't really answer the question, the question of whether you can ask staff about the drafting of the document, but if it's substantive, then I think that that does cross the line into being evidentiary instead of merely process-driven.
So, I guess, I guess my question, my question, question is, can I ask the question, and you can say whether or not it takes us to a point of reopening, or if it's just a point of clarification?
Sure, I'd be happy to, to do that.
Okay, so going back to item number 12, I believe that this, I like this very much. I understand the mayor's reluctance on this because we don't define every term here, but I like the spirit of it. So my question is actually the 123, fourth line down, almost all the way to the right, the statement that says, "And the additional density does not result in undesirable impacts that cannot be mitigated through the development plan." I just want to know what that means. And I was wondering if staff could explain what that means. So that's my question, City Attorney.
Sure, and I think that's a fine drafting question to ask staff.
Director Zucaro?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Stolzmann, members of the City Council, Rob Zucaro with the Planning Department for the city. The, you know, I think we were taking direction from council on that language as well, and I think that it would be interpreted at the time of PUD because it is, it is language that would require interpretation by the council at the time that's reviewing that development plan because undesirable impacts will have to be considered in the context of that specific site development plan.
Okay, so, so it would be up to council to define at that time what undesirable means.
Yeah, I mean, I think in, in the practical implication, staff would work with an applicant and try to understand what could be undesirable based on, you know, the, the environment that they're working in, or city policy, or, you know, things that could be something like a view corridor or something related to density because it's about the impacts related to density. So staff would, and staff would have opinions based, hopefully based on city policy, but ultimately, city council would have to determine if it complies with this criteria, which is written as undesirable impacts.
Thank you, Director Zucaro. That answers my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Lay? Oh, Councilmember Lay, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I had a question about the new, the note 13, which concerns the responsibility for construction costs. And I am looking at the, I'm looking at both the memo that went along with this as well as the language itself. And maybe I'll start with the memo, which mentions the near-term transportation improvements, including onsite and offsite improvements identified in the traffic study. I guess my question is, what? What is not included? When you say near-term, we're just talking about the, what's described in the March 23rd traffic and mobility study, right? That's, that's what it says in Section 13, and I think that's probably for Director Zucaro.
Thank you.
Yes, so I'll, I'll try to clarify that. So in order to clarify what's long-term and short-term, we tried to list the long-term improvements in the note. So that would be the improvements that are starting one half mile north of Dillon Road and then extending north to Highway 42. Those are noted as long-term improvements as far as that road widening that's called for in the traffic study, and then there are long-term improvements to Northwest Parkway and the Parkway and US 36 interchange that are noted as longer-term needs. And so those are the three areas, I would say, that aren't short-term that, that would be cost share versus the applicant's obligation.
Okay, so when you say except in the language there, you're, you're denoting everything after that is not a near-term
Correct.
project. And just for a little bit of clarification, when we talk about a proportional share of costs, what exactly are we talking about there?
So that isn't defined in this note. It's, it's usually determined, you know, a development's going to have, have a proportional share of impact beyond baseline traffic. So when you look at future traffic, future traffic projections out 20 years, you know, a proportional share would be, for example, the traffic generated from this development versus all other background traffic. So that would be one way to determine a proportional share of of traffic. So again, the, this would be, that would be finalized with the final subdivision plat, and so there would be a very specific formula presented to city council on how that proportional share would be calculated, but we, we didn't propose that formula with this note.
Okay, all right. That helps. One, one other question. I guess. And this is in the nature of clarification, probably for from the planning director as well. Back on two. This is the the one that describes the total allowable development of 3 million square feet, which was a number down from 6 million last year and down from 3.1 in the original or this last iteration of proposal. What? Do you know what, what the, the FAR is? I mean, in a rural area, I think we said it's up to 0.25. Is that correct?
That's the comprehensive plan policy is, is to have that as a maximum. That, so that three, that 3 million square feet, I believe, is within the FAR, you know, based on the applicant's last proposal for public land dedication. So the, as written, this would maintain that maximum. If there's additional public land dedication, as there is indicated elsewhere in the conditions, I haven't calculated the, the FAR, but I could do that at 3 million with all of the public land dedications and get back to you there.
Okay. Do you know offhand how close, this may beg the question that you were just offering to answer, how close to the maximum of 0.25 they actually are in this proposal?
It's, it's very close. I'll have to calculate it. I'm really not sure because I think there were additional 10 acres required within, it's, it's a little less than 10 acres, I think, in note number one, bringing it up to 93 acres. So if you just maybe move on to one other question, I could probably calculate that and get it back to you.
Thank you.
And just while he's doing that, I guess, City Attorney Kelly, is this, have we moved out of, you know, just asking questions about the notes and into new evidence with the answer to this question?
Right. I, I think that we really need to focus on the drafting. You know, when the public hearing was closed at the last session of council, direction was given to staff to draft certain conditions, and certainly, you know, I think it's not new evidence to talk about the drafting of those conditions, but the, if you're asking for new evidence for the basis of conditions or, you know, I, I think these, if these calculations were part of the evidence, then that is fine. I don't recall if they were or not. I just wanted to caution everyone to really focus on the drafting of the ordinance so that we don't take any new evidence in.
Yeah, and I obviously don't want to run afoul of those rules. City Attorney Kelly, I, I thought I was just asking what at some level is a math question about that calculation, about that number. I, I don't know that it's new, new evidence. I am perhaps admitting my inability to calculate it, but I'll do that, you know, just for the sake of speed. That, that's all I was looking for on that. Does that make a difference?
Councilmember Lay, I wasn't sure who you were asking the question.
Oh, I, I was asking, I'm sorry, I was asking the city attorney.
Oh, right. As I said, it was just a reminder to everyone to focus on the drafting and not, you know, to, and certainly you all need to deliberate on the ordinance before any action is taken, but, you know, to ask staff to present anything that may be new would require reopening the public hearing, and it's just a reminder, not a judgment of whether your calculation was or was not new evidence because certainly I, I don't remember what specificity. It's just, as I said, a reminder.
I, I don't think it's new evidence, but I'll, if the group feels that I'm straying, I, I'm certainly willing to be constrained by that. I'd rather have the information, though.
Any other councilmembers have comments or questions on the motion? Any other discussion? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. First off, I want to thank my fellow councilmembers for a really robust discussion of the last month or so, two months on this particular application. I'm going to be voting no on this, this application tonight. You know, according to our code, the purpose of a planned community zone district is to encourage, preserve, and improve the health and safety and general welfare of the people of our city. And the city has approved developments on this property before. You know, whether or not to have development here is really not the issue. The, the issue is to ensure that that development is consistent with our comprehensive plan and the criteria to approve a GDP. The people of Louisville and Ward 3 have spoken, and overwhelmingly, our constituents do not approve of this GDP amendment as proposed. Our constituents guide our understanding of this proposal and indicate what our legitimate city interests are and what will encourage, preserve, improve the health and safety and general welfare of our city. So for the following reasons, I do not find that the GDP amendment meets the criteria for approval and is not designed to encourage, preserve, and improve the health and safety and general welfare of the people of our city. First, the preservation of open space is a core value of our community. Open space preservation is written into our city charter, and voters have consistently affirmed this value by dedicating additional tax dollars and resources to it. This plan doesn't adequately preserve previously undeveloped land as open space. Highly sensitive and high-quality sections of open space remain available for development under this GDP. The plan is not consistent with previous public land dedications for large developments or with, quite frankly, with the president's plan to preserve 30% of lands by 2030. The city has a legitimate interest in preserving this land and has never before been, that has never before been developed, and in order to mitigate the impact on the city, this, this plan makes some dedications, but they are really insufficient to appropriately balance the development with the needs of the community. Additionally, I want to say that the plan requires important sustainability measures, but does not do enough to fight climate change and the illiterant sustainability. Whether with lead certification or electrification, the GDP has not fully lived up to our values as a community. Unless this development will fight climate change and its impact on human health and safety more aggressively, I can't see how this encourages, preserves, and improves the health and safety and general welfare of the people of the city. I'm concerned about the impact of creating additional office space and industrial space will have on our existing developments. The applicant has not provided evidence that there is sufficient demand for this type of development. I'm concerned that we could be competing with ourselves and stealing tenants from other spaces, spaces with high vacancy rates. I do not find that this type of development meets the purpose of this GDP. We have not been given enough evidence about the economic impact on city revenue, and without that evidence, I cannot in good faith find that this development will create economic benefits to our city. I'm really disappointed that this council has not pushed this developer to do more in the best interests of our city. For a council that talks about sustainability, we have been unwilling to require this developer to do more than they originally proposed. Nearly all of the conditions we considered in the previous meeting and that made it into this ordinance were already items that the developer had agreed to. I wonder what Louisville would be like if previous councils had not pushed developers to dedicate large plots of land for Centennial Valley or for Coal Creek Ranch, for example. Previous councils clearly had a different approach, one that has made Louisville the community that we love. This GDP amendment falls well short of that legacy. I fully anticipate that this will not be the last that our community deals with this development. I look forward to engaging with the community on this property in public meetings. And one way or another, I know that the city, the citizens of Louisville will have the final say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any other councilmembers have comments or discussion or deliberation on the ordinance? Director Zucaro, did you have a chance to come up with a response for Councilmember Lay? And it, when you describe it, will you just let us know how many stories you chose to do that calculation at and all those other details that would go into the calculation that we all could have done?
Yes, I actually stopped doing the calculation because I didn't think I was going to be able to. Yes, they, I actually stopped doing the calculation because I didn't think I was going to be able to. Answer the question base, but, um, let me see if I can finish it up here. So I basically took the. The original. Their original gross land area before there were additional proposals for open space. So I'm trying to bring that up now. So I think it was two hundred, I think their gross land area after all of the dedications. Was. Sorry. I, I'm probably going to need another minute. I've lost it. I apologize. I thought I was going to be providing the calculation. I will complete it and then I'll raise my hand when it's ready.
All right. Thanks, Directors Akaro, Councilmember Lay.
Why don't I wait for him? That's okay.
Oh, sure. That was, that was what your hand was up for, that same point? Uh, Mayor Potemalani.
Maybe I'll wait for somebody. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, Mayor. You know, first off, I want to thank the staff. I mean, you know, this is, this is a process that really started a few years ago and staff has been working. Tyracy on behalf of the citizens of Lewisville. They've negotiated a lot of things through this whole process that were negotiated before they ever got to us. So I really appreciate the, the efforts of staff. I, and I also have great respect for this discussion. I have great respect for. My colleagues because there's a reason why there's seven of us. Is to make sure that we bring all facets of this decision and these thoughts forward. I am going to support this. I did second this motion because. I do believe this is in the best interest of the city of Lewisville. And, you know, when we, we take a look at the comprehensive plan. The land use density, I believe, the land use and density, I believe, are in compliance with the comprehensive plan. You know, we, we might have different opinions on that, uh, different views, but I, I, I look at the decades of. What, so what the city of Lewisville has done, you know, we have three major business parks. We have the CTC, we have Centennial Valley. And we have, we've had what we've called Storage Tech or kind of Phillips or now Redtail. And then, and in those comprehensive plans, which have been, you know, vetted through, not only through the government processes. But citizens have participated in those and, and those, you know, have been part of the comprehensive plan. I also believe that the fiscal sustainability is one of our responsibilities in a city. To make sure that things, um, happen during the tenure that we're on council, but we also set those up for the long term. Long-term fiscal sustainability is something that in the six years I've been on council, I, I worked a lot towards and. We hired a consultant to work with us on fiscal sustainability. Um, and understanding the fiscal analysis of this. Um, and it is a positive. If it wasn't positive, I wouldn't be supporting it. You know, regarding the open space dedication, you know, one of the things that you've all heard me say, and I'm going to repeat myself, but. Approximately forty percent of the acres within Lewisville currently are open space. So when we come down to a percent. Or something has come, you know, from the president who I support. You know, we get, to get stuck on a certain percent is something that for me doesn't feel right. We have negotiated more, but the leadership of Counselor Dickinson, who made a motion. That's part of the amendment to this or a condition of this GDP. Moves it up to ninety-three acres, which something I'm very comfortable with. And I used the term before purposeful. Open space and something that Mayor Stolzmann, um, you know, worked towards around that pond is to have. I think that was something that was important to preserve. Um, and that's open space that was added into this. Uh, at the urgency or the urging of the mayor and, and others on council, so. Uh, another thing I'm very proud of and, you know, was things that we mentioned and the applicant came back with agreeing to. Certainly significant inroads to sustainability, like vacation, solar. Lead silver, these aren't things that are in our code. You know, these are, these are relatively new things. But they are, they would be part of this GDP. There are things that I believe need to be part of our code. Because I think sustainability, um, and, and making inroads and dealing with the, the climate situations that, that we are dealing with. Are, are incumbent upon us. And I hope in the next two years that we can update city code so that any new developments. Of coming forward will meet the same type of, of requirements, you know, in the last. In the last few months, even during the time we've been discussing this. We have approved both commercial and industrial development. They don't meet this level of code and. I think that is something we need to fix, that everything meets this level of code. So, you know, it comes down to, it, it's our responsibility to. Make sure that, that we look at these things that have value to the community. I believe this has value to the community. Um, and I know there's a lot of opinion on pro and con on this. And so. I, I think this is the right thing to do. And I know there are other public processes in the future councils. You know, will be defining what some of these conditions are. That's all important part of the open government process. And I respect those processes. And whatever happens in the future is the right thing to happen. But at this point in time, I believe it's important to. Approve this and move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Potemalani. Directors Akaro.
Okay, yeah, sorry for the delay on that. So what I've done is I've taken the gross land area. It's three hundred and eighty-nine point one acres and I've subtracted out the road right of way. That's within the GDP, which is twenty-five point two acres. So you get three hundred and sixty-three point nine acres. And then I've subtracted out the ninety-three acres of public land dedication that's proposed. So then I get two hundred and seventy point nine acres. Um, and then I multiply the comprehensive plan policy FAR. Of point two five and you actually get. Two million nine hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and one square feet. Um, is what my calculation is. So the way, I think that's the, the question is, once you. Subtract out all the public land dedication, what is the FAR result in? It's two, two million nine hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and one square feet.
At one story.
Uh, the FAR won't, it won't impact whether it's one story, three story. That's just total floor area. As a ratio of the land area. So lot coverage gets impacted by the number of stories, but not floor area ratio.
Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, thanks. So. If that's the case, it looks like we're. Are, uh, the current number, three million is in excess of what the FAR is that's allowed. Is that not right?
Yes, it's very close to the comprehensive plan policy, but it would be slightly over. If you maintain the three million square feet that's in note number two.
Let me, I, I guess a couple of comments and then I may, I may. Suggest something. I've struggled with this. Uh, because frankly, we have had such a robust discussion. And all in good faith and the, um, the discussion that we've had. Does, uh, I, well, and I, I would say that I am extraordinary, extraordinarily thankful for the input. Of staff and, and council, but the. The citizens of our community and, and to some extent others, but, but. People from Lewisville have provided enormous. Good information, spent a lot of time thinking about and advocating for and against different parts of this. And I don't think we can thank them enough. To be quite honest. And, um. And that, that's not unusual necessarily, but I think on a project of this scale, there's, there's a lot of detail. And there's a lot of, um, knowledge, expertise. Uh, and thoughtfulness in our community from, from, from everybody and. We've had people, you know, we've had young people and we've had older people and we've had everybody. From every, every walk of life here. So I, I think that's really important to recognize. But I, I struggle with some of the things that, that Councilmember Brown struggles with. I think there are. The criteria that we're dealing with in many cases, as you know, are pretty broad. They are informed by our own reason and. The values of the people that we represent. And. Uh, I, I very much appreciate that. I think we have done a, a good job. Of infusing into this. Proposal that we have before us, uh, an awful lot of, uh. Good provisions that are going to be service very well in the future. I am concerned, I, I went back and read a lot of this material that we. We've been given, um, and the criteria. And I share with Councilmember Brown some of the concerns about. The PCZD zoning and whether this does meet the health, welfare and safety. Criteria. I, I am concerned about. The environmental impacts of all of the new traffic. I think that's something that potentially is pretty significant. I am also concerned about. The. The economic. Market analysis that we received and, and particularly the piece in it relating to. Office development, um, which strikes me as, as pretty, uh, optimistic. And maybe overly so, even by its own internal logic. I, we, we had some discussion at our last council meeting. And. Uh, about the, the number of square feet that, uh, we're looking at here, three million. Square feet, which seems, you know, which is, as I think we've seen too much and ought to be. Changed and I can do that in a minute. I frankly. Wanted to. In, in part for, for these, both of those, those reasons, the, both the, uh, the nature of the. The increased environmental impact of. What is it, twenty thousand plus trips per day? And. The. Uh, I, what I think is the. Overly optimistic, uh, economic. A proposal, what I. With your permission would. Would propose is. A substitute motion, which would. Change all, or not change, but leave all of the conditions the same. Except. To reduce the square footage from three million to two point seven. And that's based on the two factors that I described. I realized that that is. It, it's hard at this stage when you're talking about qualitative factors to turn them into quantitative factors, but. We are not required to. Work within mathematical sufficiency, but, um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make that.
Is there a second on Councilmember Lay's substitute motion? I'll second that. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Lay, did you want to say anything else to your motion before I go?
I think I've said it.
All right, Councilmember Lipton.
Gosh, my co, my comments were directed to the original motion. I don't know what to make of the substitute motion. And I don't know if we're tripping over the line in the sand as to whether or not we're in a. Going to trigger the renewal of the public hearing or if we're able to have conversations about this in. Our deliberations. So I would ask our city attorney to give us some guidance and constraints.
Our city attorney Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilmember Lipton. So procedurally. I can offer a suggestion, rather than having a substitute motion. On the floor, since there's only the one revision, uh, to the conditions and the ordinance. Councilmember Lay could instead offer a friendly amendment to the original motion. To revise condition number two, um, as he's requested and. That may make it more clear where we're at in terms of, um, the procedure. The friendly amendment to the original motion would have to be accepted by both the. Councilmember who made the motion and the council member who seconded it. Uh, would that make it more clear, Councilmember Lipton?
Well, I think it takes us back to the, uh. The central issue is if we. If we made a change and we wanted to understand more about the consequence of the change. And the impacts on the development. And all of that, are we going back to a, the need for a public hearing or. Are we allowed to do that tonight? Because that could get into a fairly far-reaching conversation and perhaps even the applicant would want to participate in that.
Yes, I think it possibly could. Um, you know, really, the public hearing is closed and so the council's deliberation. Uh, tonight is about the, the ordinance before the council. Certainly, questions can be asked of staff for drafting purposes. But, you know, if there's more information needed to, um. You know, to, to change substantively the conditions, then you might be looking at needing to reopen that public hearing.
City Attorney Kelly, just to clarify, so, sorry, Councilmember, I was just wanting to clarify what the city attorney just said. So I, I mean, it is, I understand what you're saying for asking for additional information or asking new questions. But it is within the discussion to add or remove or to modify. The, um. Conditions that were brought before us tonight. That's within our purview for discussion and deliberation, correct?
Absolutely. And, and the council members can certainly, um, pose questions of one another. What they feel about the evidence that is contained in the public hearing that's been presented to the city council. It's just. When you are asking questions of, um, you know, either staff or certainly the applicant. Or anyone else that's not a member of the city council, I think you really need to focus on whether the, the question is. Really just about the drafting of the ordinance and changes or if additional information slash evidence is being sought. And if it's the latter, then it would be appropriate to consider reopening the public hearing, which would require. You, you would not be able to do that this evening. It would require a new public notice.
And as, as a matter of fairness, I, I think that we'd want. Certainly the applicant and perhaps members of the public to be able to provide their input for a change like that. Which we can't do just by having a debate among the city council.
Right. And certainly that, that would be the purpose for reopening the public hearing is to allow all of, um, that additional. Discussion and information to occur.
So, um, let's ask Councilmember Lay. I mean, we do have an appropriate motion and second on the table with a substitute motion in place. I'll just ask Councilmember Lay with, given all the discussion that's just happened, if you want to stay with where we are or if you want to withdraw the substitute motion.
Well, based on what I think I'm hearing from. The city attorney, I think it, it probably makes. the city attorney, I think it, it probably makes, probably more sense to, to do it as a a friendly amendment and not as a, as a substitute motion.
And so Councilmember Lipton, will you accept the friendly amendment from Councilmember Lay?
No.
All right. So given that, Councilmember Lay, would you like to make a substitute motion?
Yes.
Or just, okay. And so I'll second your substitute motion. So we're back where we are. The motion on the table that we're discussing is moving to approve ordinance 1811 with the conditions, but modifying condition number two, where it says three million square feet to say 2.7 million square feet. Is that right, Councilmember Lay?
Good.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I, I had my hand up before. And I guess I should make my comments since this is the motion on the floor now. And I possibly won't be able to get my comments made if it carries. So I think it would be appropriate for me to make my comments. So I think, you know, I'll start by saying, I, I do appreciate everybody's work on this. And I know this has been very laborious for staff, certainly, and, and the public to continue to be engaged and to continue to give us feedback. And, and certainly the applicant for, you know, changing their plans, certainly over the last year or two, and getting us to where we are now. And, and I, I mean, I mean that very sincerely. There was a comment about what other city councils had done in the past. And, you know, I'll, and I'll be absolutely honest and frank. I, I've been a part of this process as part of planning commission and city council for over 30 years. And I've been directly involved in most of the major developments in the city. I was involved with Centennial Valley and helping shape that. I helped shape Coal Creek. I helped shape North End. I've helped shape, gosh, just about everything imaginable over the last 30 years. Because 30 years ago, we didn't have very much of a city. And certainly CTC can be added to that list too. So I know what's happened over the last 30 years. I know the dynamics of the city council and the planning commission. And I can honestly say without any hesitation that this has been the most demanding city council and the most demanding planning commission of any that I've had the opportunity and pleasure to work with. And I don't think it's fair to diminish the what we have been doing as a city council, what the planning commission did on this, and to compare it to other city councils, because this has been, like I said, the most demanding process I've seen. And we have a great city. There are always some things, you know, over a period of 30 years, you wish you had at least a do-over now and then. But I think overall, and you're looking at, you know, the total work of what's happened over the last 30 years, we've done some really great things for what was really a very small kind of a small dusty community, you know, backwater 30, 35 years ago. So as a city, we've accomplished very, a, a lot of things. And, you know, it's easy to, you know, kind of beat yourself up over the things that may not be done perfectly. But I think we got most of it right. And we'll have the opportunity to do over certain things as it goes through a life cycle of development and redevelopment in the future. So I feel very good with what we have done with this. And I think it's got a lot of integrity and I, I, I think the process was great. Now, so, some of the comments I made one or two hearings ago, you know, some of the principles I've, I put forward to you, I think still are relevant in looking at the, at the resolution or the ordinance. And, you know, as I said last time, you know, there is no perfect development plan that's going to satisfy everybody's interests and opinions for this piece, piece of property. There is no perfect development plan for any piece of property. This is kind of the dynamics that everybody goes through to get to something that satisfies many of the interests and priorities that we have. But, you know, granted, nothing would be perfect, no matter what the changes would be, because there is not perfection in any of this. And I think that to this process, and I have said that we need to find compromise and common ground to balance a number of key interests. And I'll go through my list of interests one more time, because I always use this list to compare the plan to and see where the results were and whether or not we're meeting these principles. First is to ensure environmentally sustainable physical development of both land and buildings. And I think this is probably the most sustainable, environmentally sustainable plan that has been approved and I'm hoping implemented in all of Boulder County. And, and I think probably in the state of Colorado, from, from what I know. There's no, there's no question about that in my mind. We need to provide strong stewardship to our open space program and ecological interest. You know, certainly the, the minimum open space dedication has been met. I think it's been met several times over. And we have probably gotten as much out of this development in the way of open space and preserving ecological interests of any development I've seen in the city of Louisville in my 30 years. And that includes Centennial Valley, since people seem to use that as a benchmark. I think it needs to support the city's economic vitality and financial sustainability. And I was standing, Councilmember Lay's comments about the economic analysis. I think the economic analysis is, is strong and sound. And it applies what we have agreed to as a council in terms of the model that we are using for other, other developments and applying it to this particular development, excuse me. And, you know, you can, you can always say, well, you know, what about this? What about that? Did you, I mean, there are so many hypotheticals you can put into a financial feasibility model or economic development model, you can blow up any model if you, if that's really what you want to do. I think this one has integrity and it's the model that we've agreed to use. Be lawful in the application of our municipal code. And I think certainly based on the integrity in the process of the hearings and the, the application of our municipal code to this particular development, we have certainly met that requirement, that principle. Respect and preserve private property rights, as has long been the tradition of the city. Our city has always respected property rights. That's why we have a municipal code. We don't allow takings. We have never even thought about takings in my 30 years. And I, I think as a matter of principle, whether it's your property or somebody else's property, you want government to protect your property rights interests. And I think, I think we have certainly tried to do that in this particular application. Agree on a plan that has reasonably high probability of financial success and is physically feasible from a developer's and a building owner's perspective. It's not in the best interests of our community to force a plan that cannot be financially successful. If you have an unsuccessful development and it gets interrupted and abandoned in the middle, it doesn't do anybody any good. It's got to meet the market conditions. It's got to be attracted to occupants and building owners and developers. And if it isn't, then there shouldn't be anything that was done. Last thing you want in this community is a failed piece of property. And we've had that in the past and we're dealing with it now from other properties. And it's, it's a, it becomes a blight on the community, perhaps not in the legal definition, but certainly as a, as a brand. And finally, provide additional potential and financial and development incentives to the developer to exceed the minimum GDP requirements that would help incentivize additional open space dedications and help achieve zero carbon development. I think in these 13 conditions embedded in there are a number of incentives that might actually get us more open space or get us closer to net zero development or do some of the things that we've been trying and talking about doing and actually putting it into a GDP. So there's a framework. So a developer in the community can use actually not just to achieve some of our goals, but actually exceed some of our goals. But you can't do that without having some incentives and it's got to be financially feasible to do that. So I think we have now built that into within several of the 13 conditions. So with all that in mind, I think we do have a balanced plan. I don't think everybody will, everybody will embrace the plan. I mean, there's every plan I think I've ever been involved with in my 30 years has been some opposition and people that didn't like some aspect of it. But I would think that, I think we have split the baby as best we can on this one. And I think we do have a plan that's feasible and that's, that is in the best interests of our community in the long run and over the 20, 30 year development cycle that this will take. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, since it's my first time to speak, I will echo some of the other comments of just my appreciation to, to staff. I was running for council and this was an issue. This is a topic of conversation more than two years ago. And so this is, there's been a lot of time, effort and resources put into this. And I really do truly appreciate all of the fine work from staff to, to do their best to take the direction of our, of our policies and our intention and try to, try to craft a, a project as best they can. Of course, with the developer having their own intentions and their own desires and not necessarily taking every cue from, from staff. It's an imperfect process where, where people have different priorities. But I really appreciate staff's effort. I really appreciate the public engagement. Again, there's nothing that has received more public engagement than, than this. And so it's been a, a pleasure to read and, and incorporate the, the opinions of our community. Of course, I'm one of those members of our community as well. And into this, into this plan and what we're, what we're hoping for and what we really don't want. And, and so I appreciate the, the community's interactions. And then, and then council, I've been, I've been just absolutely so happy with the dialogue and the debate. And, you know, I think, I think one of the reasons is that we are actually in, in agreement about so many of the macro issues. And then when you get to the micro moments, there, there, there are going to be disagreements, of course. But I think everyone's been working really hard to try to find some sort of consensus. And, and so I appreciate, I appreciate that dialogue. To the, to the meat of the, of the evening, I think, for me, and one, one of the, one of the things I was witnessing when I wasn't on council is, you know, when, when we have rules and then someone comes forward with an application for anything and it meets those rules. I was witnessing sort of a, yeah, that's the rule, but we'd like something else. And I think that's hard for me to, to, to watch. And I'm really excited about changing the rules. And I'm really excited about being a part of a progressive city council that is looking forward to other topics even on tonight's agenda. And at the same time, as a homeowner, someone who did a remodel in our town, as a business owner, the rules have to be fairly followed. And so I, I think there are moments where we're demanding a five. We get a, we get an offer for a seven, but we really want a nine. And I think that's fair. I think it's fair to communicate that, what we want. But I, but I think that it's, it can be unfair to look at, again, I'm being vague, a seven and say that's not enough when five is what's required. And so I'm pretty happy with a lot of the things that have come from the public input, from council input, from staff's work. And, and as Councilmember Lipton said, it's not perfect and I don't love every point of it. But I think, you know, like Councilmember Brown, I agree with so much of what you said. And I think that you and I, you know, a, agree on so many things deep in, in who we are. So I don't think you and I are far off at all in what, what's important to us, right? And so I think what's, I, I want, I don't know tonight whether it's going to pass or fail. But number seven is the applicant shall revise sustainability commitment plan to note that all commercial development above 10,000 square feet shall meet the LEED silver rating. That's never been in a GDP. That's amazing. And that's because of you, Kyle. Like, that's here because of you. It's not old and that's frustrating. But we've never had LEED silver rating for all buildings. That's amazing. And number eight, the applicant shall revise sustainability committee plan, commitment plan to include a commitment to provide three megawatts of solar capacity onsite. We've never demanded that much, ever. And that's a large part due to you and due to, I hope, me and other people. That's an awesome requirement. Number nine, the applicant shall revise the sustainability commitment plan to include a commitment that all building types include all electric HVAC and domestic water heating systems. That's unheard of. That's a win. That is a huge win. And we wouldn't have that if not for our residents demanding it and for Councilmember Brown and, and Mayor Stolzmann and myself and Debbie, Deb and Dennis and Jeff and Chris, everyone wanting that. And to give credit where credit's due for the applicant being willing to do that. That is a huge thing for us. And so this isn't perfect. And it isn't a nine. It isn't gold. It's silver. But I, I'm, I want to be proud of what we've done as a council, even if it isn't everything we want. And I don't want some of us to feel like we haven't done our job because we didn't get to nine or gold. I think we've done some really good work here. I am willing to support what I see tonight. But I am not supporting it in opposition to Councilmember Brown. I'm supporting it in appreciation of Councilmember Brown. I think that you've done amazing work and you've represented your constituents perfectly. And you fought for things tirelessly and I appreciate that. And I agree with so much of what you say every time you speak. I agree with so much of it. And, and so I, I, I think that's the end of my comments. I, I'm really looking forward to the PUD stage. I'm really looking to forward to the final plat stage. I'm really looking forward to our conversation later tonight. This will be a work in progress for decades. And, and we have work to do as a council in the community to keep crafting what we want in this really important space in our community. So that is all.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Haigh.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to add in my comments and, and appreciation for everything that's been done by the staff, by council, by the developer. There has been so much work and so much thought put into this plan. And I agree that it's surpassed all of our requirements in so many ways. So it is a, you know, it's, it's a gold star for us as a council to get a development like this built in the city. I am very happy with the plan as it's stated and with the, with the amendments that we put into the, into the proposal for tonight. I'm, I guess I'm of the mind that perfection should not be the enemy of the good. And while as this Councilman Dickinson said, this isn't perfect, it is still very, very good. And so I'm in hundred percent in support of everything that's been done and will be in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll add my comments at this point. I want to thank the staff, the members of the public and the applicant also for putting in all the time that you have. And I really want to echo my thanks to my colleagues, like was stated by others. I do think the robust debate at times, we can seem snarky with each other, a little short with each other. But I do think challenging one another and understanding each other has been very healthy and made, made us better for it. And the applicant made some closing comments to that point as well, and I really appreciated that. So, you know, I've heard a number of people tonight say this is above and beyond anything we require. I disagree with that. I, I, when I look at what is allowed on this site, going into the application, it's 2.5 million square feet of space. And this is an increase over that. When I look at what's allowed on this site, it requires a minimum land dedication. That's true, but it gives council the responsibility to address view sheds and corridors and clustering and things like that. So when I look at the numbers, when I looked at the three million number, actually that was one that gave me quite a lot of heartburn. That increase in density on this site seems to move away from the rural designation and the comprehensive plan, in my opinion. So I really appreciate what Councilmember Lay has offered as a compromise tonight, like looking at that floor area ratio and what we're trying to accomplish with the rural designation and bringing it to 2.7. That, that makes a big difference. That that makes a big difference, in my opinion, in keeping with the rural designation in the comprehensive plan and the type and character of development. So I appreciate that councilmember Lay looked at that and brought it forward for our consideration. It's still an increase in density on the site over what's allowed today. So I can understand why people would be disappointed that we would do that on on a property that's supposed to have a rural character. A few things still, I mean, I talked about this a lot. I gained no traction with any of you, but I'll just restate it for my closing comments. And that is just that in the traffic analysis, I'm very concerned with the location of one of the streets and causing a huge traffic problem for years to come. I know we've all been sitting in traffic before and wondered, who allowed this? Who said this was okay to put these two traffic lights so close together? Like, I have to sit here for four cycles to get out of Louisville. Who did this? And so I just want you to know, I don't know, we may, none of us may be alive in twenty years when this gets built out, but if we are and we're sitting stuck in traffic, I just want each of you to know that we did this. It's our fault that we're sitting in traffic. So I just, I wish we could move that that street and combine it with Paradise Lane. It makes the stacking problem much less worse. If you look at the math from the the report and how far back that stacking goes, it's just, it's it's like we got the information from the traffic engineers that showed us there's a problem. There's an obvious solution. I wish we could do it. And so I'm frustrated that we weren't able to resolve that. And I really, I know the GDP sets out the streets and the road alignment. But I would not at all be sad if during PUD they came back with a different street location. That would be fantastic. So I know that's not a process and I know that that's the point today is to set the street locations, but I just with everything that I've seen in the public hearing, I'm just so concerned with the location of the campus drive coming out onto ninety six and just creating a real issue with the AM and BMP, primarily the AM, but also the PN. So that's the the street alignment is our requirement to address during GDP. So I just had to say that. I do appreciate the robust discussion we've had around open space and Mayor Protem Maloney framing it in the context of really meaningful open space, whether it's for habitat reservation or viewport or preservation. And I think we've had a good discussion around that. In the application materials, it does talk about the type and character of development, number of dwellings. I've already talked about the number of dwellings. And the type and character in keeping with industrial and office is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I do have some reservations about the industrial design standards being right up against interlocking like that on the gateway rather than using commercial design standards on the street. So that is one reservation I have, but at least they've put the loading docks on the on the rear side of the property. I just, I'm not sure that that is the best choice. So I I have a number of problems with this overall, but I do think councilmember Lay's proposal makes it much closer and and makes it a much harder decision for me this evening. So I appreciate that. And and so I look forward to any other discussion around the topic. Any other councilmembers? All right, seeing no other comments, is everyone clear what we're voting on?
The substitute motion, correct?
Yes, we'll vote on the substitute motion. So it is to approve ordinance number eighteen eleven with all of the conditions as written except amending condition number two to change the three million to two point seven million. All right. City clerk, can we please have a roll call on the motion?
Mayor Protem Maloney?
No.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
No.
Councilmember Lipton?
No.
Councilmember Fahy?
No.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Thank you, everyone. So that brings us back to our original motion. Any discussion, any further discussion this evening from folks? Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, so I would like to make a friendly amendment that we change the same section of the motion that we were, or excuse me, the same section two of the draft ordinance to be consistent with the number that we received from the client director, and I believe that number, and so this is what I would propose, is that we change the number three million square feet to two million nine hundred fifty thousand one hundred one square feet.
Does the motion maker, councilmember Lipton, to accept the friendly amendment?
No.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Lay.
I I guess the only question that I have is maybe for the city attorney, is that consistent with the standard that we have to follow for that property?
The comprehensive plan is a guiding document. You know, I I don't think that it would be outside the council's discretion in applying that document to have a condition that it be three million square feet, which is less than forty nine thousand different. It's, you know, it it's a percent. I don't, I'm not going to do the math, but it's a very small percentage above.
Square feet.
Right. It also could be considered in some people's opinion to be a rounding factor, rounding, but certainly the comprehensive plan is a guiding document. It it's not a
Councilmember Lay, any other discussion on the topic?
I I guess just to confirm councilmember Lipton is not willing to accept that as friendly amendment?
Councilmember Lipton, would you just confirm that again for councilmember?
I think councilmember Lay heard my answer. No?
I think he just wanted you to confirm it. So thanks, councilmember Lipton. Any other discussion from folks? I'll just add, I I do think that there's still a table on the general development plan that lays out floor area ratios on different properties. So I think the discussion may be a moot point. All right, seeing no other hands raised, we're voting on a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen eleven, series twenty twenty one with the conditions as written in the packet. City clerk, can we please have a roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
No.
Councilmember Lay?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And that takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is ordinance number eighteen thirteen, series twenty twenty one, an ordinance amending title seventeen point one six point one seven oh of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning swimming pools and spas. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in the Daily Camera on August twenty second, twenty twenty one. I'll open the public hearing and ask councilmembers if there are any disclosures or recusals this evening. No disclosures or recusals. I guess none of us have swimming pools. So with that, I will turn it over to our planner, Lisa Ritchie, to take us through the presentation this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Let me get this to slideshow mode here. Can you all see my screen? Okay?
We sure can.
Great. So thank you for the introduction. This application was properly noticed for municipal code requirements. And so just as a little bit of background, staff is generally viewing this as a cleanup item, so I'm going to go fairly quickly through this, but basically just want to reiterate our primary purpose is that swimming pools are permitted in a safe and consistent manner. Our zoning code included fence and gate requirements back in nineteen seventy three. Since that time, we've since adopted building codes and title fifteen that include safety standards for fences, gates, locking covers, alarms, and other means to ensure safety. In addition to that cleanup, we are adding the term spa to be able to apply the same accessory setback standards to that type of use on a lot, just in addition to swimming pool, to actually have a supply to spas or hot tubs as well as a cleanup to remove the reference to the State Department of Health and Environment. Commercial properties are subject to this already under the building code. As well, we just want to note that we do have a number of PUDs in the city that have fence requirements. And so oftentimes these are in conflict with the zoning code and it's just, it's an inconsistency that they can solve through building code. And we can get away from a deviation that of conflict that are in some of our PUDs that say have will allow a fence that's shorter or require a fence that's shorter. The primary thing here, though, as well as just we can maintain that these are requirements are up to date and in best practice just through title fifteen. And again, just regulations, we've just currently been applying the setback standards for accessory structures to spas, but we'd just like to codify that just to set the intent. And with that, we are recommending approval of this ordinance, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Planner Ritchie, for that great presentation. And so I'll ask members of the public if there are any comments on this ordinance change. And you'll have two chances because of this ordinance. Seeing none, that takes us back over to council questions and comments. Any council questions on this cleanup measure? Just like to thank the staff for bringing this forward. It's always a good thing to keep our code in good shape and so we can apply it fairly. All right, seeing no council questions or comments, that takes us to our second and final round of public comment on this agenda item. Any members of the public here to comment on the swimming pool ordinance this evening? You can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button that you'll find at the bottom of your screen, or if you've dialed in by phone, you'll dial star nine. All right, seeing none, that takes us back over for council comments or motions. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Lisa Ritchie and the Planning Department for working on this. You know, these are things where you have expertise in cleaning up code that help us a great deal. This is a really good example of that. So I thank you very much. With like, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen thirteen, series twenty twenty one. Thank you, Mayor.
There is a second, councilmember Dickinson?
Second.
Would you like to speak to the motion, councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, no, I I agree with Mayor Protem Maloney. And just wanted to note on the presentation that it's interim director of planning. And congratulations, Lisa, on the on the promotion. I think it's just awesome and we really appreciate all the work you're doing for us.
Thank you, everyone. Seeing no other comments on this one, I will close the public hearing and ask for a roll call vote from the city clerk.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is ordinance number eighteen fourteen, series twenty twenty one, an ordinance amending the city's disposable bag tax to provide a credit in the amount of the state carryout bag fee to be collected with retailers and otherwise aligned with the state carryout bag fee in order to reduce the administrative burden on the city's retailers. This is our second reading and public hearing. It was advertised in the Daily Camera on nine twelve, twenty twenty one. I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any disclosures or recusals. Seeing none, I will turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Katie Baum, Sustainability Coordinator. So tonight we're talking, going over the bag tax amendments as per council direct direction as well as, you know, coordination with the state bag fee. The ordinance we've provided tonight has some clarifying as well as some some amendments that will kind of fix us a little bit more on target with the state's bag fee. Those proposed amendments include the administrative credit, which is applied to retailers that fall under HB twenty one eleven sixty two. These retailers will continue to collect twenty five cents per bag, and that will begin January first, twenty twenty three. Additionally, we have removed the exemption on farmers market vendors in the city bag ordinance. Farmers market vendors are required to collect twenty five cents on each plastic and paper bag given at the point of sale beginning January first, twenty twenty two. Additionally, we have, we have changed the remittance requirement to be quarterly to align with the state, the state's bag fee. The city will create a process to separate the state, the state fee, and we will make every attempt possible to spend that state fee portion of the collections first on administrative costs when the state fee remittance begins in twenty twenty three. And I am happy to take any, any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. And there are two rounds of public comment on this as well, since it's an ordinance change. So I'll take it to the members of the public. If there are any comments this evening, please raise your hand and tell us what you'd like to tell us. RJ Harrington, your first up.
Good evening, council. RJ Harrington, four five seven East Rain Tree Court, your neighbor here in Louisville. I'd just like to say thanks especially to Katie here and the rest of the staff for doing this tremendous cleanup work to make sure that what we, the citizens, passed as a ballot measure last year is in fact also in alignment with what the state passed, which fundamentally is a result of we, the citizens, democrat- democratically electing those representatives and senators to the state legislature. And why I'm going with this or where I'm going with this is citizens. Citizens have engaged at a very high level, a deep level, a broad level to ultimately eliminate demand, new demand for fresh fossil infrastructure with the result being fresh individual disposable bags. A decision was just made to approve an ordinance that will allow for fresh fossil gas infrastructure. But when it's put to the citizens, we reject that. We reject new fossil demands. We are seeing the effects of extracting, combusting, making underground fossils into plastics and styrofoams and things that continue to poison us on a daily basis, on a regular basis. If you don't have the Air Now EPA app on your phone, I suggest you download it and look at it every single day. And if that doesn't disgust you when there are no wildfires burning, then I'll wonder why. If it does disgust you, understand that most of that air quality index failure is coming from the fracked gas assault that is happening on our air quality. And so this particular alignment to continue to put a stop to fresh plastics in our environment is to be lauded, applauded. And we got to shout it from the rooftops because we pushed hard as a city, as city citizens. We got a great result. I would suggest the state took our lead, didn't push as hard as we, the citizens, did, but did a pretty good job nevertheless. So thanks again, Katie. Thanks, staff. Appreciate the cleanup. Thank you, council.
Thank you, RJ. Any other members of the public here to comment on this topic tonight? All right, that takes us back over for council comments or questions. The public might wonder why we're not very talkative on this. We did previously have a council conversation on this and give direction to bring back all these things that have been brought back tonight. So thanks to staff for bringing those back. So it takes us back to the members of the public for a second round of comment. Any other members of the public care to comment this evening? This is your last chance on this topic tonight. All right, back to council members for motions or questions or comments or discussion. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance eighteen fourteen, series twenty twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahy. Back to councilmember Dickinson if you'd like to speak on the motion.
Yeah, thank you. I I really do appreciate the work of staff, especially Kitty Baum for sort of solving a complicated problem. I I know in this HB, sorry, twenty one eleven sixty two was passed. It's like, oh, man, okay, so wait, what does that mean for us? And your solution makes perfect sense to me, and I really appreciate the work that you guys put into helping decrease the complexity, because what I hear from business owners is not a resistance to the idea of reducing plastics. It's like, wait, how's this all going to work? So I really appreciate the effort to make it easy and simple and not to add to the complexity of of an environmental goal. So thank you so much for your work.
Thanks, councilmember Dickinson. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank RJ Harrison. Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank RJ Harrison for his comments, use of fresh in so many new ways is something that was very interesting. So thank you for that. I never think of fossil fuels and the word fresh. But, you know, this is something that when I got, I was elected to council in two thousand fifteen, that Councilor Lipton was talking about then. So, you know, we, we got this on the ballots. Now we're at the final stages of an ordinance that's tweaking things so it can go in place in January. And so I appreciate everything that this council has done putting it on the ballot. And I appreciate the citizens voting for it, but I want to give a special thanks to Councilor Lipton, who really carried this for many years until the council had the will to do something and to put it on the ballot. So I will absolutely be supporting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brett Timbaloni. Any other discussion this evening on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask City Clerk for a roll call vote. If you're saying our names, we can't hear you. City Clerk Muse, can you hear us? We'll turn it to Planner Reece Ritchie that perhaps do a roll call vote for us.
Sure, happy to jump in here. So Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy? Yes. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries and that takes us to our next agenda item. And in the meantime, if some staff members can work with the city clerk to make sure.
Sorry, Zoom kicked me out, but I am back.
Okay. I was just wanting to make sure that everything was okay on your end. So I'm glad you're back. And that will take us, so the motion carries on the plastic bag tax cleanup and that takes us to our next topic this evening, which is discussion direction on dark skies amortization. And we'll have a staff presentation from Lisa Ritchie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council again. So tonight, you know, we just wanted to check in with you again. We've had some chance to dig into the direction that you all gave us a few months ago and we learned a lot. So here, just to get some more information and guidance from you before we advance into next steps. And this, so this is more specifically around the amortization policy. And when we use that term, we basically mean kind of a timeframe for which properties need to come into compliance with new regulations. So these terms are commonly called amortization. And we'd like some guidance from you. I have some images that just kind of talk about what dark sky is and these best practices. We don't need to go here tonight, but if that comes up in your conversation, we can come back to that. So again, amortization requires compliance within a set time period. The timeframe under kind of our legal authority to do so should have a nexus or some sort of connection to the level of investment that a property owner has put into whatever kind of the nonconforming element is. So basically, kind of the framework would be as if a property owner bought their property with that investment the day before you enacted a new regulation, what would be kind of the impact? And so in the, the cost of investment. And so you really want to set a timeframe around that, that framework. So we do have alternatives. We'll go into those later. But essentially, if we don't do an amortization requirement, we could just use our existing nonconforming requirements, which requires compliance upon new development or redevelopment within a certain threshold. But other than that, properties can maintain what they have, keep them in good repair and remain out of the new requirement. And so, you know, when staff got to thinking about this amortization requirement and how would we would actually kind of operationalize this, manage this, we wanted to understand the magnitude of what we were asking. And so we looked at, you know, kind of broke this up into two pieces, single family residential and commercial and multifamily. And we also could approach the amortization time period differently for these two segments, given the level of investment. But we did a little bit of research. So according to the census, we have roughly sixty five hundred single family residences. Staff surveyed four different neighborhoods in town and did a kind of a visual survey from the street of what we could try and detect was what would we would consider a dark sky compliant lighting. It appeared that roughly twenty two percent appeared to comply. That might be a little bit on the high side. I think if we weren't sure, we might have tipped more into compliance. We also kind of tried to figure out an average of roughly three and a half light fixtures per home. We're going to assume about a six hundred dollar investment to replace, assuming they're not doing the work themselves. So if we kind of extrapolate that out, we have probably fifty one hundred properties that would need to upgrade their fixtures and that's roughly eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand light fixtures. And so if we look at what could we do to offer incentives, which I should say from a legal perspective, offering incentives can help justify a timeframe. So particularly the more aggressive you want to go on a timeframe, I think from a city perspective, the more we can do to offer incentives and education and support can help justify a timeframe. And so we looked at, you know, our, in the census data, our poverty ratio is roughly about six percent. If we funded all of those, we'd be looking at about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. If we offered a fifty dollar incentive to each household that hasn't upgraded their lights, that would turn into a roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollar incentive investment. Again, those are in twenty twenty one dollars. So just a little bit of background there. When we looked at commercial and multifamily, it's a lot harder to estimate compliance visually. And so it's not just a matter of the light fixture themselves. It's also a matter of, if we look at what we would be likely including in a dark sky ordinance, it's kind of light illumination. So how bright is the light? What's the color temperature? What's the light spread? So kind of dark, dark spots, light spots, things like that. And so in order to evaluate existing lighting on commercial properties, it could require a lighting engineer if we don't have all of the specs kind of based on original construction or they haven't changed things out over time to determine if all of the factors that would go into a new ordinance, if a property owner complies. I think it's, you know, I tried to ballpark it and I'm hesitant. I think we've been really good over the last probably twenty so years of requiring full cutoff fixtures. So from a fixture design perspective, I think our fixtures are probably squarely in majority or, you know, trending on the compliance side, but as far as all of the other components, that's more difficult to tell. And then when we again talk about kind of the rationalization for a timeframe for amortization, the level of investment on a commercial and multifamily properties just due to the share size is significantly higher. I don't have an estimate for you, but, you know, it would range in the tens of thousands of dollars. It varies based on size, architecture, number of parking lots, house site, you know, private drives, et cetera. And so again, from a legal, legal framework, the higher the investment, the longer the amortization period. So, you know, staff, when we were reviewing ordinances, we noticed that the city of Boulder adopted a fifteen year amortization period in two thousand and three. This expired in two thousand and eighteen. Staff had, just again, for one wants to note, city of Boulder was extremely accommodating with all of our questions and we actually met with a staff member who was in place at the time they adopted the ordinance as well as there today. And so they had the full gamut of experience. And based on, you know, kind of, they had a lot of lessons learned. For one, they didn't do an estimate of compliance prior to adoption or as a result of the ordinance and they did not do any proactive enforcement of the ordinance. It really happened through redevelopment, new development, and then as staff became aware of properties not in compliance. And so in their experience, the amortization, I don't think it would be unfair to say that they didn't consider it successful in the fact that they adopted an ordinance and then didn't follow through on the intent with that. And so I think we take that as a big lesson learned here that if we want to go down this route, we want to understand the pros and cons, the impacts to the city, as well as adopt something that we actually intend and have the resources to follow through with. So that was a really kind of the lesson learned from Boulder staff. And so when staff was thinking about the limitations, you know, when we again look at the single family residential, we would hope to be able to provide a lot of great education around to our residents about what is a compliant fixture. You know, there's a lot of resources, even if you go to Home Depot, Lowe's. A lot of the light fixtures will say dark sky compliant on the box. And so if homeowners are paying attention, I think the resources are available there as well as staff can, you know, promote what, what complies, but we don't have a review process in place. And so I think if there's an expectation that staff would be reviewing light fixture replacement, that would be for one inconsistent with what's required in our building code, swapping of fixtures doesn't require a permit. And so we would need to establish kind of a new procedure and permit type to be able to process that if that's the expectation. That would, you know, from a staff perspective, significantly increase permit volume. Alternatively, you know, you could just do it through education, but I think you'd have a, you know, a pretty good number of homeowners not installing the right type of fixture, which I think would lead to a lot of frustration if we don't put a permit process in place. Additionally, if we do want to do some sort of program to subsidize or provide new fixtures for low income households, staff currently does not have any resources or tools in place to do a qualification. Not to say there might be partnerships elsewhere, but that's not certain, you know, not currently something the city provides in any other fashion. Again, from a limitation perspective, on the commercial multifamily side, it's difficult to determine compliance of existing fixtures. To put a process in place might feel cumbersome to your business owners who would have to potentially hire a professional to understand if they comply in addition to having the financial investment of having to replace fixtures. So just want to be clear on that. It's difficult to determine compliance just visually out of the gate. They would need some professional assistance in most cases as well as proactive enforcement. So we are not currently staffed to provide proactive enforcement just given the sheer number of properties within the city and compliance verification requirements. So again, circling back to what options do we have? I think staff kind of has three paths. If anyone else has any other ideas, we certainly can explore those, but the first path would be regulation through our existing nonconforming code. And that just would require conformance when properties develop new development or within a certain trigger for redevelopment. They would come into compliance at that point. All others could remain. We could do a regulation through the amortization policy. Again, our concern here is just we want to be eyes wide open about impacts and resources and would require significant staff time. And finally, you could adopt an amortization policy without proactive enforcement, similar to what the city of Boulder does. Staff doesn't recommend this. I think there would be a misalignment with community expectations. There would, you know, potentially be inconsistent enforcement and legal concerns with taking that approach. So wouldn't recommend an amortization policy without the intent to follow through. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then I do have just some questions up on the screen if that helps you navigate through a discussion.
I'm muted. And thank you so much for that presentation. I'm going to go to members of the public for their input on this. I just want to remind everyone, we're talking about the amortization policy tonight around the dark skies. And we did have a previous discussion more broadly about the dark skies policy and we will have a future discussion about a dark skies ordinance more broadly, but today we're giving council direction on this amortization policy. So staff can incorporate that in the ordinance when it comes back. So with that explanation, I'll turn it over to members of the public. If you'd like to tell us anything about dark skies amortization policy, now would be the time. And this is your only chance on this one because it's just a discussion direction topic, not an ordinance. Our first member of the public that would like to comment this evening is Josh Cooperman.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at two sixteen Griffith Street in Louisville. Again, I like to say that I'm, I'm really thrilled that City Council is planning to adopt a dark sky lighting ordinance. I would like to reiterate my support for including an amortization period in that ordinance. I won't go through all the arguments that I went through in my letter to City Council, but I just want to highlight one, which is that if there is not an amortization period, I think the ordinance will be somewhat weak considering that there's not too much more room for development in town. And, you know, there's a decent amount of redevelopment, but most properties are not being redeveloped. I also think that if we don't include an amortization period, then we're giving sort of a signal to our citizens that this ordinance is not that important and I think it should be important. I'd like to make two little comments related to staff's presentation. I'd first like to suggest that the monetary estimates for single family houses are probably a little bit high. I would guess that in some cases people will not need to replace whole fixtures, but could become compliant by replacing bulbs or reorienting fixtures. And I'd also like to remind council that in most cases, when people replace their fixtures, they'll be replacing them with more energy efficient fixtures that put out less light. And so there will be savings that they accrue because they're spending less money on electricity to light those fixtures. The other thing I'd like to note is that staff talked about tailoring the amortization period to the investment that residences or commercial entities would have to put into replacing the fixtures. And I certainly think that's a great idea. I would like to say, though, it's really not news that we need to reduce light pollution and that light pollution is a problem. So I think, you know, in, in deciding on an amortization period, we should, you know, we should note that, you know, people really should have been putting in dark sky compliant fixtures for a long time. I mean, Boulder put in their ordinance in two thousand and three. So, yeah. And so finally, I would just like to say that I'm really glad that staff talked, staff talked to Boulder about their experiences with their ordinance. I think it might be useful to talk to some communities that are more of the size that Louisville is because I would think that enforcement is quite a different thing when you have a hundred thousand versus twenty thousand people. And there are some dark sky certified communities of similar size to Louisville and it'd be nice to get in touch with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to council member discussion. Councilmember Lipton.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to Lisa for a great presentation and a lot of research that went into this. And, you know, I, I guess maybe I'm overthinking this and I'm not sure quite how this would apply to an average homeowner. So like I had to replace several fixtures about three years ago because of hail damage. So I went down to Lowe's or Home Depot, wherever, and bought three fixtures. They were like thirty, forty bucks each. Took me about an hour to put them in. You know, all's good. Put in LED light bulbs. So I'm all set, I think. But I, my question, and I think we want to make this as easy as possible for the homeowners to be able to comply with is if, if I was to do that, say tomorrow, under this potential ordinance, do I have to get a building permit?
No, so I think that's, yeah, a couple of points. You're right. I think we were probably guessing high on the level of investment. I think you're right. You can find cheaper light fixtures out there. And if you do the work yourself, then certainly you're saving labor costs. But I think we just wanted to kind of put in there an estimate that if someone's not comfortable, we're not assuming that they're going to do that work. And then to your second point, no, this work does not currently require a building permit. So if you're not rewiring or doing any electrical work behind the fixture itself, this does not require a building permit. And I think that's one of staff's concerns is how are we going to be able to message and potentially do enforcement on this? Or if there's an expectation from the community that the city and city staff is going to monitor these changes.
Okay, and, you know, you said you spoke at length with city of Boulder. What were, you know, what were their takes from their implementation?
You know, I think generally we were really hoping to hear kind of what were the tips and tricks on how you messaged this? How were you successful? What was your compliance rate before? What was your compliance rate after? You know, basically was this amortization tool, kind of the meat of our question, was this amortization tool successful in advancing your community and with regards to dark sky lighting? And, you know, kind of out of the gate, their answer was, we don't know. They didn't track compliance before. They don't currently track compliance now. They really do basically what we would be doing with new development and redevelopment, which is requiring properties to come into conformance. And so, you know, I think it was just a little bit of a lesson learned of making sure that your code practice aligns with your intention and resources. So they, you know, I think quickly realized there's not staff resources, even though they, I agree, they are a much larger community. And I think from our perspective, we assumed, you know, if Boulder did that, they would probably have been to have, you know, had the resources to do And I think from our perspective, we assumed, you know, if Boulder did that, they would probably have been to have, you know, had the resources to do what it took to make sure that folks came into compliance. And, you know, they acknowledged that they didn't. We didn't reach out to other communities, you know, once we kind of heard their lessons and thought about it ourselves. We felt like, you know, in addition, if there's other communities that have done this, we felt like it was worth a check in with council. From our perspective, kind of where we see this going or what our concerns were.
Okay, Lisa, that, that's very helpful. I, you know, my sense in going into this, and I do endorse the goal of dark skies and our need to kind of push this along a bit is, you know, it's, it's almost like when we were providing incentives to buy low flow toilets, or I can't remember, we've had other incentive programs before. And I thought we could get to that, you know, and, and implement those kind of changes over time by doing those kind of incentives and then doing some education and whatnot. I, I didn't think we're going to get, you know, into, you know, a compliance discussion or the need to hire additional staff or, you know, to me, this was going to happen over a period of time. And, you know, working with local merchants, I went to the Home Depot the other day to just look at these fixtures. And I couldn't see any that were labeled dark sky. So I, I left, I mean, I looked at all the fixtures. Row of fixtures for life and me, I'm not sure which ones would qualify as dark sky and they're not labeled any of the boxes for dark sky. So, you know, I think there's that, I think people would normally just buy those if they were, if we made it easy for them to do it.
Yeah.
Merchants made it easy to do it. I'm not sure we need to, you know, to be honest, I'm not sure we have to provide incentives fifty dollars for each household. Like for those that actually apply, I think for, hoping I use the right example, the low flow toilets or whatever we did on the water side, very few people actually applied for the incentives. They just, you know, they needed to replace something. They went out and bought it. And, you know, and, 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 you know, it was all good. So I'm not sure that we're going to be asked to, you know, have to provide a lot of incentive money. You know, if this happens over a period of several years. So anyway, those are my questions and comments. And I'll defer to the other council members. But thank you very much, Lisa.
Sure. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lisa, for working on this for us. This is a concept that I find very interesting. And at the same time, I, I share council Lipton's angst with, you know, the devils and the details of how you implement this. And I think that Lisa, in your presentation, you kind of pointed out a number of those kind of things that could be challenges. But just one quirky thing with this, the term amortization. You know, somebody with, one of my degrees being in business, I don't know where the international standard came from using the word amortization. But it's incredibly awkward to me, but that's, I, I will bear that one. You know, as far as the incentive, you know, I think this would need to be as simple as possible. And I don't know if people would, would use it or not, but if it's something that starts moving us towards a goal, you know, whether it's fifty dollars or whatever that number is, and it's easy, ease, easy to implement. You know, whatever tools we have in our tool bag, I think we should use because, you know, we have issues of light pollution. I remember in the spring, you know, wildlife people were talking about, okay, now we have all the migration of the birds at night and what, you know, all the lights in the sky, it's, you know, they're having navigation issues. And certainly there is human health issues. There's, you know, crime and public safety issues that have to be considered. Recently, I spent time in North Park and I looked up in the middle of the night and I could see stars. I could see the Milky Way. So I know that's one of those things as well. And that's, you know, there's all sorts of reasons for us to consider doing this. I look forward to us moving this ahead. I don't know exactly what that means, the devils and the details, but, but I would like to see us do something. And, you know, I, I, I don't think things are labeled very well at the home improvement places in town. But I think if this was an incentive program the city had, I think they would start doing some labeling to incent people to buy product. Though I think there's things that we can do. And I know we did this with another program in two thousand and eighteen. And maybe Katie Baum can remind us of what that program was. But we've worked with, you know, the home improvement stores in town and have made end roads. And so whatever we can do to move this ahead, I'm all for it. And I look for further discussion. And thank you again, Lisa.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Lisa, again. The, the work you've done is really remarkable. I'm also in favor of this whole program. My question would be, I think for, actually for Kevin probably, our finance director, is we have a program currently to assist low income residents and seniors with their utility bills that is handled through the Sister Carmen Center. So they do all of the qualifying and all of that. Could this be something that's added to that program for low income residents? So I like the whole incentive idea. I also like the education idea. I think the combination of those two things going forward is what you're, where you're going to get the most buy-in for it, I guess. And I like councillor Mayor Protem Maloney's idea about contacting the home improvement stores. We have three in town now. And if they all advertise, these are the dark sky compliant fixtures, I think it will help people, even if they're not aware of our programming, it will make people aware. Oh yeah, that's something I've thought about too. Why don't I do that? And could even get people from other cities to purchase dark sky fixtures. So I am in favor of all of this and whatever it takes to get the city compliant, I would be in favor of doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I think that the, you know, I really appreciate the work of the, of Lisa and her team and just all the research that has gone into this. It's, I'm very much, I think that any part of, any program that we implement has to include a lot of education, a lot of, and, and I would be very much in favor of putting city resources towards some sort of incentive program. You know, in terms of how do you, how do you get sort of existing development, existing buildings and come into compliance versus new buildings, right? I think that's, that's an important question. And it's, and it is, it is, I recognize the sort of resource constraints and the need to probably, the sort of my, my own reticence towards creating kind of a new permitting program for this. So I think the more that we can do, even as we have requirements, maybe, you know, giving homeowners or building owners some period of time to get into compliance, even as we have those, those requirements and those, those kick into place, you know, really making sure that we're communicating with our citizens and educating them. That's, that's the kind of amortization program that I'm thinking of at this point. But, you know, want to continue the discussion to think about other, other ways that we can help our folks get understand what the new requirements will be and get into compliance.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. I'll add my comments at this point. So first, I just want to really thank Josh Cooperman for his email. I think it went into a lot of detail and I would outline our policy exactly around some of the things he talked about. Talking like a number of council members raised concerns and issues and questions about the dark sky policy. And I think he pointed out like ways to address those issues in a really fair and meaningful fashion. So like porch lights underneath porches and things like that could be exempt or certain low level lights, like holiday lights and things like that could be exempt. And so I want to really thank him for taking all that time to send us that detail. And I would hope we incorporate all of those comments into what we do. I do support an amortization period. So I think a lot of the comments tonight have been around things we already agreed to. We already all agreed that incentives and education were important to us. But I think at the end of that period of incentives, there has to be a period of compliance. I mean, if you don't have a period where you say this is when we're going to actually start enforcing it, you know, and then there will always be uplighting, there will always be fixtures out of compliance. And I think using Boulder as an example, maybe not as an example to hold up as a shiny star, but of things that maybe didn't work as well as they could have, because you still can't see the stars at night when you're in Boulder. You know, that's, at the, at the end of the day, we want to help the migratory birds. We want to be able to see the stars. We want to help the other species who are awake at night and things like that. So I think we want to see those kinds of outcomes. And so to get that, I do think there has to be this regulatory component that we all don't like to talk about. Because everybody wants everybody to just do the right thing and know the right thing, but not everybody knows to do this. And in fact, like even myself, when we started talking about this, I looked at all my outdoor fixtures, which I never turn on. But nonetheless, I was like, I really don't know for certain if they're dark sky compliant. So I do think, you know, educating people, helping understand. One thing I sent the city attorney a question on that I think could really help us is to regulate the sales of fixtures. So I think it's worth having staff bring back a regulation that requires outdoor fixtures that are sold in the city to be dark sky compliant. I think that is a easy solution. Then if you go buy a fixture for outdoors, it's, it's dark sky compliant. So I would hope we could rally around that and give that direction to staff as part of the program. I think we all said we support incentives, but I think doing it in a way that kind of provides the program like, okay, we're doing this incentive period and this education period. And then there's going to be auditing done on some sample. And we're going to see how much it improved our compliance. And at some point, you're going to have to get your fixture changed out. So take advantage of this incentive program. I think that the two go hand in hand. I don't think you just do an incentive program and then don't have any kind of compliance. And an example I'll use is the My Ride cards we did. So we did a My Ride card giveaway, which is like RTD passes, RTD fare. And you would think, okay, in a city of ours, you know, nobody's going to want to wait in line for, you know, fifty dollars of free bus passes. And there was a line around the corner at the library. It was so popular. Everybody lined up and waited their turn to get these My Ride cards. So people do like free things. That's a positive thing. And they will come out for them. But then we were able to track the data on use of those cards. And they didn't necessarily get a lot of use. Maybe they took it once or something like that, but they didn't necessarily use the whole fifty dollars. And then very few people, some people used the whole fifty dollars, but they didn't refill the card. Our hope was, once you get into this behavior where you use the My Ride card, you'll refill it. And then you'll keep taking the bus. It'll be this behavior change. So the same thing could be, what we could learn from that is that that didn't happen because there was no requirement on the other end. It was all just an incentive and then a hope. And so I think in this case, we don't want to have an incentive with a hope at the end of it. We want to have a meaningful incentivization program with education that ends in a regulatory framework that provides us compliance and dark skies. So I understand staff's concerns. I think they were really well laid out and really meaningful. And so I wonder if there are options where we could have, if there's any kind of contract agency that does this kind of evaluation of compliance and door to door outreach, I could imagine like a six month or one year contract of, you know, somebody that does like a door to door job of like, here's your door hanger. You have eight fixtures that I can see from the street. They're not in compliance because it, it is a big deal. So I just wonder if there are models on how to get to compliance. And I wonder if the staff could come back with some research from cities that are thought of as successful. So I, I think I've heard like Flagstaff is very successful in this. So I wonder if we could learn from them. What did they do? How did they do this? And maybe we do something innovative, like with neighborhood leads, maybe like each neighborhood area gets a team lead that's passionate about this. So like, you know, my neighborhood's Dutch Creek, maybe somebody in the neighborhood would be the team lead. I have a person in mind that calls me about dark skies all the time. And maybe she could talk to the neighbors, give out the educational material. Maybe in Caleb's neighborhood, he can think of somebody. I know Joshua Cooperman would sign up for it. You know, I can think of somebody in Debbie's neighborhood that would sign up for it. So maybe if we can do something like that where we engage the community around it and try to get some extra help getting the word out. But I, so in short, I think we need to have an actual regulatory framework on the end of this nice guy period. Otherwise, I think we'll have uplighting and non-compliant lights forever. And I really hope the rest of the group can be supportive of some kind of regulatory tool to require dark sky fixtures be sold at our, at our stores. Thanks. Any other comments on that? We're sort of all over the place. So we might need your bullet points up on the screen, Lisa.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you for that.
And we also, we didn't really talk about, I think everybody's really focused in on residential, on the residential side of things. So I think we need to talk a little bit about if we want to do a different type of program for the multifamily and the commercial.
Yeah, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
I'll just start off, I, I think similarly to my comments on the residential side, I think having an amortization program on the multifamily commercials important and providing incentives is important there as well. So I, I think we talked about this before. I'm okay with like a three year period or something like that. I think if we go much beyond three years, it's one of those things that it just drags out cost. It drags out compliance, confusion. So I think I would favor a shorter period on the amortization period for something like this, like a one to three year kind of timeframe. But I understand that other people likely want it to be longer, but just putting it out there. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm more supportive of the amortization with commercial than residential, only because I think businesses are sort of used to regulations and used to like, all right, oh, so what do I have to do now? And what's, okay, what's the new sign policy? What's the new light policy? What's the, you know, okay, great. I might be annoyed, but it's part of my business and I'll, I'll do that. So I think that's pretty easy. I think on the residential side, I kind of, I, I just sort of imagine us five years from now getting hundreds of emails of like, hey, I got a notice on my door. What is this? Like da, da, da. I've had this light forever. What, I, what do I have to do? I don't understand. And so I think, I think we could create a lot of ill will for our residents when our intention is good and when they probably otherwise support it. But again, in the residential area, if you come over the hill and look at Lewisville, it's blanketed in trees. And I, I think the residential communities tend to have, again, you know, my house, actually I know about your house, but like even if my light were upward facing, I have hundred and twenty foot trees above my home that are making it very difficult for light to go upward beyond my property. And again, you know, my, it's one of my lights under porch, another one's under porch, and another one isn't. But I, I don't know that we make the same progress with a dark sky result by really getting after residential front door lighting. Where as a commercial building is going to be in a bigger space, more open, you know, bigger lights, more lights. I think, I think we make a lot of progress with the commercial areas more than we do with residential. And I think they're more suited to comply than the residents are. So I would like everyone to comply and I would like it to be, and I think last time we had this conversation, I was, I was certainly in favor of amortization. I think I argued for the shortest possible, like let's just, let's get it done and let's do it with incentives and let's make it happen. And seeing the staff report, I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable with putting, putting staff in a position where they're carrying out something they can't carry out and are getting lots of negative feedback, like not allowing people to sled down a hill kind of feedback. Where we, we just get, that wasn't the intention. We're not trying to, we're not trying to ticket everyone, punish everyone. We're just trying to accomplish something we all want, which is to protect dark skies, to protect open space, right? Like don't sled here kind of, right? Because shouldn't. But now we're getting a bunch of negative feedback. So all, all that to be said, I, I think that I could support, and I, I, I don't know if it's, we can piecemeal it like this, but I would support amortization enforcement on commercial buildings, but not so much on residential. I would support more just education and encouragement and potentially incentives. I don't know how much incentive of fifty dollars, I kind of agree with Councilmember Lipton or maybe it's Maloney, that I don't know what fifty bucks, if that really puts people into action on their own porch lighting. But those are my thoughts and happy to hear everybody else's.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I, I'm really intrigued by the idea of, you know, making sure that lights that are sold within the city of Lewisville are compliant. you know, making sure that lights that are sold within the city of Louisville are compliant with um, with dark skies policy. I think that's a uh, certainly an, a, a really uh, innovative way of thinking about um, ensuring compliance, especially in residential setting, uh, in a residential setting, because lights were out. And as they get replaced, they'll um, be replaced with things that are compliant, whether folks are looking to do that or not. Um, so I think that's a really, a really um, exciting idea. I also favor sort of a shorter time period. I can't believe that it took older fifteen years to do that. That's quite a long amortization period, in my opinion. So I would, I would favor something on a much shorter time period, like, you know, three years. So.
Um, Lisa?
Hmm, thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't find the raise hand button with my screen shared. Um, wondering if City Attorney Kelly feels prepared to chime in regarding the legal basis for amortization period. So, you know, I did have a conversation with her um, around this. And that was part of the basis for the city of Boulders fifteen year period. And again, from a nexus to level of investment, um, if she's still on the call, um, and she feels prepared, I'd like to have her share her thoughts with you all.
Sure. City Attorney Kelly, please. That'd be great.
Yes, thank you. Um, sure. So I, you know, I think Lisa put it very well in the staff report that essentially when you're talking about amortization, you want to look at the, the value of um, the design element that is being phased out and give the, either the um, property, give the property owner a chance to uh, utilize the value of their investment. So, you know, Lisa and I talked about the fact that the residential fixtures were um, pretty inexpensive. And so if the council were looking at different amortization schedules for residential versus non-residential, that could be appropriate with the residential being shorter, um, commensurate with the lower investment of the property owner. But you know, I understand that some of these multifamily and non-residential properties that it, you know, it, it could be quite expensive. And so you really do want to make sure that whatever amortization period you select does not deprive that property owner of the investment that they made in the fixtures that will be made non-compliant upon adoption of the ordinance. Um, you know, and I, and I've read in the staff report and understand that we have some challenges with regard to those um, multifamily and non-residential and that, you know, we're not even really sure without hiring an expert at this point, um, you know, what level of changes would be necessary to make them compliant. And that might be important information if you're looking at a short amortization period. You know, I told Lisa, if, if the range is like, you know, ten years for these properties that have substantial investment in their exterior lighting, that, you know, that feels like a very comfortable place. You know, certainly Boulders fifteen years is um, is longer than I've seen. But you know, when, when you're looking at the residential properties, I do think that you can go with a shorter time period because the investment is not as significant.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. And so I just have a question following up on that. I mean, do people typically do some kind of program to buy out like remaining useful life? Like let's say a light fixture has twenty years of life. And you know, they have three years of life left on their light fixture. What, is that what's done typically to make people hold if you want to go faster? Um, or do people typically just slow down the amortization period?
I don't have the answer to that from a research perspective, but I do from a legal principle. I think what, you know, City Attorney Kelly shared with me is the more the city does to defray the cost associated with the investment, then the tighter the amortization period from a legal perspective can be. And so from, you know, that's partly why staff did the evaluation on the incentives for the residential, just to give uh, council and a magnitude for a budget perspective. Um, so from a legal perspective, I think yes, from a, do, do communities do this in practice? I would have to um, research that.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Lisa. And I know the county um, has required uh, people to get rid of their outhouses in, in areas of the county, which required people to put in bathrooms and water and plumbing, like in these old cabins, like in the woods in Netherlands and things like that. I think, and, and that was quite expensive and not that maybe what they did was illegal, but I think they required people to do it within five years. So I do know there are examples where governments do require these types of compliance things in, in short order, even when it is quite expensive. Now, they might have ignored their city attorney or county attorney and done, done something illegal. So maybe that's bad. City Attorney Kelly?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that there are uh, specific statutory provisions for connections to sanitary sewer. So that is treated a little bit differently.
Okay, perfect. Very good. Any, I think we have a lot of um, questions remaining open at this point. So I think we need to hone in on a few things. Councilmember Lipton. Here on you.
Sorry. So Lisa, are we requiring a specific certification in the ordinance that we, we use for purposes of compliance?
You know, we haven't dug into that. I know there's um, you know, kind of the dark sky, International Dark Sky Association has um, fixtures. I think they have a lot of materials. Um, I don't know if there's a specific certification. And then back to your point, whether or not it's going to be identifiable on a box at Home Depot or Lowe's or if someone's buying something on Wayfair or Amazon, that it's going to be kind of readily identifiable from a homeowner perspective. But um, I also hesitate to put a specific standard in the zoning code that has a long life from an organization or a certification. Rather, you know, we try to set the, you know, the actual parameters from an, you know, numerical perspective that would probably be equivalent. So I don't know the answer to that, but would get into that with the development of the ordinance and can bring forth options if helpful.
Yeah, and I would just add to that on an ordinance, I'm sorry to interrupt, but on an ordinance, we would probably have the physical construction of the fixture would have to be um, full cutoff. Um, is the highest standard that you would usually see and is the most common. And then you'd have a lumen maximum, which is the brightness of the light. And then we'd probably have a color temperature standard as well, um, because that's important for wildlife and dark sky standards as well. So we, we would be um, you know, with our permitting system, we'd probably be issuing over the life of this, let's say five to six thousand permits if we do all commercial and residential. And you know, um, reviewing their fixtures probably, and then inspecting their fixtures to make sure that they comply with each of these standards. That's what we do on new commercial development, you know? We, we actually look at the fixture, we look at the um, the, the cut sheets. We look at the lighting standards that are provided for the lumen output, if we have a lumen standard uh, and so forth. So that's, that's how we would be verifying it through the permitting process.
Yeah, so I, I understand on the commercial, industrial uh, and probably multi-residential. Yeah, I mean, you do have a process where uh, you, you have fairly well um, educated people in the sense of development and construction. And they have to apply for permits and use building codes, things like that. Okay, I'm not, I'm not so worried about that. I'm worried about my neighbors. So my neighbor, you know, Joe Banana down this block has to replace a fixture and goes in and doesn't, you know, buys the wrong fixture, buys it off Amazon, doesn't know aluminum from a cutoff, you know? And, and there's no way we're going to make these people uh, experts, subject matter experts in lighting fixtures. They're going to say, okay, I got a broken fixture. I'm going to go buy a, a fixture. I mean, and I understand your reluctance to use some, you know, uh, association certification process. But you know, the, I think we really have to make this pretty simple and straightforward, and the products have to be available. So, you know, we can't, we, it's got to be something that's on regularly carried, not just by Home Depot. But a lot of people don't buy, you know, brick and mortar anymore. They just want to go to Amazon and order some, some, you know, fixtures or bolts or whatever. So, yeah, I, I guess that's the kind of the conflict between using performance standards and using something that's based on, you know, some certifications or building code requirements. And I don't know how to thread that needle. Um, based on the conversation tonight, Lisa, I'm looking forward to your recommendations. Lisa, I don't think it's easy.
And yeah, I, I agree with you. Well, I certainly, we now have a lot more research to do. I think particularly on the right standards for residential lighting, so that it's messible and understandable for our residents to com- gain compliance.
Yeah, and the fact that it's going to uh, impact seventy or eighty percent of our residences over the next, whatever we decide. And we're going to have a lighting police going up and down the block at night trying to pick out, you know, offenders that are going to be issued a notice. You've got to replace your light fixtures. Good, good luck finding them. Or, you know, and explaining why they have to do. I mean, this, this is, you know, I know our intentions are, are good, but I also don't want this to end up being heavy handed. And uh, so anyway, that, that's, that's your challenge in developing this. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, th- th- this last um, piece uh, about the enforcement is just points up the idea that we, I think um, Councilmember Dickinson mentioned and others of, and of the, the need to do a really, really robust education effort in the city. And uh, I, I think also of our tack with parking violations that, you know, we need to have some pleasant um, lighting ambassadors. Um, you know, like the parking ambassadors that we've had that, that take a kind of low key approach. I, I do, I still have some, I mean, I, I understand the need for compliance and all that. I just, I do have some concerns that um, uh, I don't know. I, I think voluntary compliance is how, maybe we can, we can mix uh, an initial voluntary compliance piece with getting tough later. But I think the more we can incentivize people um, and the less we regulate the heck out of them, the better.
So it sounds like there's absolutely consensus for an incentive program. There's absolutely consensus for an educational program. So I, I think a hundred percent of us agree on that. And then I think without seeing a specific policy written up, it's hard for us to understand, you know, um, what we think about the other programs. That's kind of what I'm hearing. It's like, I think I've heard most people understand and say, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, there has to be a rule, but how we get to that end of the day is really important to people. That's, I'm just trying to capture what I've heard everyone say, and people don't want to come across as too um, aggressive on this. Uh, at least on the residential side. On the commercial uh, side, I think just coming back with a policy that, you know, lays out a reasonable amortization period and, and how you plan to enforce it. It sounded like there was less concern on that side from folks. Did I capture everybody's comments? Or the consensus of the comments accurately? Lisa, I know that that's probably not as much direction as you'd like on what to do around the amortization policy on the residential side. I just think that we don't know enough to give you more direction. Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, so you, on the commercial side, we hadn't really talked a lot about the commercial side. Um, you know, if, if a commercial development comes in and they're in compliance now, are, are we going to then tell them they're going to have to replace? Well, I mean, commercial lighting is very, very expensive and um, it requires infrastructure. And uh, I, I don't know what we had in mind in terms of telling them a, for a PUD, we had already approved. Now we want you to make a change and, you know, and make that investment. And we're only going to give you how much time to do that? I mean, I would like, I think it would be better to get that into their replacement cycle, if there was a way to do that. As opposed to just, you know, if they already invested in some product, maybe even recently say, oh, sorry, we changed our minds and now we want you to replace everything and it's going to cost a lot of money, but too bad. So anyway, uh, you know, and, and I guess I'm arguing for a longer amortization period than perhaps some feel comfortable with. But say, I don't think we should just be changing the rules of the game, you know, quickly in that. I, I'm not sure that's fair.
Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yes, I'm, I'm wondering if we're going to have a requirement in the code for any new construction and require dark sky lighting for anything, commercial, residential, multifamily, everything. Is that right?
Yes, that's the intent from what we heard last time.
Okay.
All new development and a certain threshold for redevelopment.
Right, okay. Um, and then uh, sorry, now I just lost my pretty thought. Um, oh, just, I'll just go with that then. Sorry.
Lisa, it looked like you were going to say something?
So I was just gonna, I guess I'm not, I chime in with what I've heard if you all are done sharing your thoughts on commercial, but I might be premature on that.
I, I think I summarized what I thought I heard everyone saying, then Councilmember Lipton added in, in his perspective as well after that. But I had, I, we had already been talking about that.
So I think we've heard that you are still interested in exploring an amortization policy. Um, the timeframe will need to put some, try and get a better handle from a legal framework on value for commercial and bring forth a recommended time. I think what we'll also need to do is um, develop maybe a budget impact um, for you so that you all can understand the budget ramifications for adoption of an ordinance with the intent of compliance and enforcement. Um, and at that point, I think when you have that additional information, um, what I'm hearing is maybe an ordinance that has kind of option A and option B. Um, we'll, you know, we'll talk as staff if that's the right thing to do. But um, I know we have heard that this is a high priority and we want to get an ordinance in front of you. And so I think maybe we'll explore kind of the option with an amortization policy along with kind of here's all the budget ramifications and staff limitations on expectation around that. And then one that doesn't include that, but still have a budget implication for funding incentives um, over the coming years. And so I think, you know, you, again, we've heard clearly that you, you know, want to do incentives. I think in any case, and so we can put some dollar signs and um, I'll get with our finance department to understand that. Is that an unacceptable option for council at this point? Or do you want us to come back again with more information before we draft an ordinance?
I think it sounds like a great plan, Lisa. That summarized it really well. The only thing um, that you didn't capture was my proposal to bring forward an additional ordinance that requires that fixtures, external fixtures for buildings that are sold in the city of Louisville would be dark sky compliant. And so I'd be interested in seeing that as well. I think it's a really useful tool. And I recognize, you know, nothing's foolproof and a hundred percent, but I sure think that would make a big difference.
I'll work with City Attorney's Office to see if that's something that we have the ability to do and then bring forth to just, you know, kind of real world thoughts around that um, as well.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you for your feedback.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Great discussion tonight. And then that brings us to our next topic, uh, which is ordinance number eighteen sixteen, series twenty twenty one. An ordinance adopting by reference the twenty twenty one International Energy Conservation Code with amendments repealing chapter fifteen point six zero of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning Prescriptive Energy Code and Design Criteria, amending title seventeen of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Uh, first reading and we'll set the public hearing for October nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Are there any council member requests for additional information for the public hearing? When it comes forward, I would like staff to include um, the appendix that was deleted from the IECC that was for net zero buildings, if that could be uh, included as an attachment. And ensure that the EV um, from the IECC that was deleted as an appendix, the EV readiness uh, appendix for the IECC is included as an attachment for consideration. And if there could be some language, um, that's just very simple, that would be added into the building code that would say uh, new construction uh, has to uh, can't use fossil infrastructure. Something along those lines or can't use natural gas as something to consider and for discussion. If you could just pre-draft something up so that we're not trying to draft from the dais. And not to say that the council will or won't adopt it, but just to have it ready for discussion. Councilmember Fahy, other things you need?
Yes, I was just wondering if. If we could, if, when we, we talk about adopting this, are we going to be adding additional? Requirements to the building code, uh, that are sustainability related, or are we limited to whatever is in the, the proposed changes?
So what we're talking about is adopting the, uh, energy, International Energy Conservation Code, um, update for twenty twenty one and some other changes. That are all, um, really targeted at our sustainability goals. This is on our work plan for addressing sustainability in the building code. So that's what we're, we'll be talking about next time.
So it will be in addition to what the I C C is requiring?
So whenever we, uh, whenever, whenever we talk about the, the building code or any of those things, you don't have to adopt it in total. Um, you can, uh, parts of it, you can amend it, you can add to it. So, but the discussion, um, is only limited by the title of the agenda item. And that's because of our open meetings law.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other things people need for next reading? All right, I move, we approve, uh, the first reading of ordinance eighteen sixteen, twenty twenty one, and set the public hearing for ten nineteen, twenty twenty one. Is there a second? Thank you. Any other needs or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, everyone. That takes us to the City Attorney's Report.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items. Um, I have one future agenda item, which is, uh, at our budget meeting, which I think was a week ago. Uh, we talked about having a discussion around the museum and I didn't see that on the advanced agenda, so I would hope we could add that to our discussion on September twenty eighth. Um, City Attorney Davis, does that work?
Ms. Stolzman, it's actually scheduled for October twelfth.
Oh, great. Is that a Tuesday?
It's a, it's a study session. We're going to make it a special meeting.
All right.
Or October eleventh, maybe, whichever that Tuesday is.
Twelfth, it looks like the twelfth. Great. I just wanted to get that onto one of our Tuesdays. Fantastic. Mayor Proton Maloney?
I had the same topic. I, I don't see any reason to wait until October twelfth. Um, I don't believe there's a lot of outstanding budget discussion left, so I would like to propose that. That museum visitor center discussion, which is currently on October twelfth, be part of our discussion on September twenty eight.
That sounds like a great plan. I'll just ask, um, our city manager if that works schedule wise for getting the appropriate staff members at the meeting.
Yeah, you know, I know, I know that staff are originally available for that October date, and so I will have to check in to see if they would be available. And we also have, um, you know, a bit of a time crunch with the packet. I don't know that they have the materials prepared yet. Um, so I will check in and see if that would be possible. And just so you're aware, we, um, you know, we, we will be able to. Have any outcomes from that meeting prepared and incorporated into the budget discussion the following week. So we're kind of planning to be able to react and respond to any direction that you provide around the museum to incorporate into the public. Hearing for the budget the following week.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Davis. So it, it's our preference to have it on the twenty eighth, but if staff can't be there or there are constraints, I guess we understand that. It would be on the twelfth. Does that work for you, Mayor Proton Maloney?
Um, it would be my preference to do it next week as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so I think the staff have heard that and will work toward that. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I'd actually like to take a contrary view to that.
Sorry about that.
Mostly because part of the, part of the point of this was to get public input. And I think it's. I, I'm not sure what the rush is on it, but. I think it gives a little more time for people to react to, to the packet, um, and to get the packet. If there's some pressure on that, but, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna throw myself in front of it. But it seems to me that was part of the reason why we're. We're having that discussion. So I, I would propose that it stay on the twelfth.
Okay, Councilmember Fahy?
I would agree with Councilor Lay. I think the staff is going to need enough time to. Collect all the information that was requested by council, and so it would be better to get their input and. Public input on the twelfth.
All right. Well, I don't necessarily understand all the inner workings of the discussion that's going on. So, um. I, I think in any case, we get a packet the Friday before a meeting and then it appears on Tuesday. So I would hope everybody publishes to their circles. That we're going to be talking about this. This is not to be a secret, like people need to know. So, um, we'll all find out if it can come. Sooner or later, the benefit, I see benefits both ways. I see detriments both ways. So I hope everyone can, um, just be happy with when it falls there. There's no perfect answer in this case. And in any case, please make sure your, your circles and neighborhoods and neighbors and friends and family all know about the meeting, so there can be a robust discussion. Any other committee reports or future agenda items? All right, seeing none. Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.